We'll go ahead and get the meeting started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. It's great to see a room full of brothers and sisters, of people that I know very well, and welcome to those on YouTube. This is the regular City Commission meeting, August 25th, 2025. We'll go ahead and start with roll call.
Benson?
Here.
Birch?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Sarda?
Here.
Conkling?
Here.
Hunoff?
Here.
Mosher?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Mayor Villanueva?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda, we will, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 11th, 2025. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Before you are the schedule, is the schedule of bills. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye. Bills will be paid. Okay, number four will be the City Managers' Report, but before we get to that, there's a couple of things I want to say. I've said this before, and I'm just going to reiterate what I brought up my very first meeting as mayor. I'm going to reset the tone again to make sure that we're all on the same page, and so I wrote a little something out that I'm going to read to you, so please bear with me. Okay, everyone, good evening. In Yankton, we know that true leadership is not about titles, it's about service. Every, and every service is strongest when it's built on teamwork. Every project we undertake, every challenge we face succeeds because people come together with a shared vision and a willingness to support and help one another. Leadership means setting the example, but teamwork ensures no one stands alone. When we lead with humility, communicate with respect, and work side by side, we not only strengthen our communities, we lay the foundation for a future where Yankton continues to grow, thrive, and inspire. Together, we are stronger, and together, we lead. Those of us sitting here at the front of the room have a difficult but fulfilling job to do. We have been elected by the people to serve our community. We report to the people that have elected us, and sometimes it can make things appear or in this room uncomfortable. The City Manager, the City Attorney, and the City Finance Officer report to the Commission as a whole. The City Department Heads report to the City Manager that is in charge of all day-to-day city operations, and I would add how difficult the task that is, but she does it well. At times, we have to ask difficult questions, but when we need to do so, we have to do it with decorum and respect. Commissioners, I ask if you have something to say, please turn your mic on, and I will call on you before you start to speak. The reason for this, if you don't turn your mic on, then the camera won't actually see you, and people don't know who's speaking if you don't have your mic on, so please do that for me, and I will call on you. When we have guests, please do not interrupt, but rather listen to one another, or one another's answers and dialogue, and listen with the ear of your heart. We are in this together. I have something I found at aimhappy.com that speaks to the very point I'm trying to make. You in this room have heard this before, some of you have not, and so I'm glad you're here, and I'm going to read it with a full room and an open heart. And it's titled, "We Are Here Together." I am no better or worse than anyone else. I am on a unique journey. Yet though I see our differences, it's still true that we are more alike than we are unalike. What I put out into the world always comes back to me. Today, I offer loving kindness, positive energy, and joyful service. I choose to leave the world a better place than I found it. Today, I ask, how can I help? I know that when I lift another up, I am lifted too, because I am part of something bigger than myself. I honor our differences and embrace our similarities. Through my positive communion with others, I will know peace in my heart, harmony on earth, and joy in my journey. And so what I'm saying is, in this room, we're going to respect one another. We're going to ask good questions, and sometimes they're going to be difficult. We won't interrupt, we're going to turn our mics on, and I will call on you. But we are a team, and I just want to reiterate that. Thank you. City Manager Leon.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission, and folks here from the Fire Department and from the public. Few things I want to bring up. First of all, I'd like to start with a win. Riverboat Days, I think, was a win. Very warm riverboat days, probably the hottest, but want to thank everybody involved. I think the music keeps getting better and better, and the event keeps getting bigger and bigger, and it was thoroughly enjoyable. The Police Department reports it was a fairly safe riverboat days. The city had four arrests, I believe. That does not include what maybe Highway Patrol dealt with, or what the Sheriff's Office dealt with. City had four arrests for varying different things, but that's citywide, that's not just contained to the event, so that's pretty good. None of them were anybody sitting up here either, so that's even better. So thank you to everybody involved in the Riverboat Days, and thank you to our city staff that's part of Riverboat Days, although we're not responsible. We help out the Riverboat Days Committee, and we try to get Yankton as ready as we can for the company that we have, and so we're excited about the good comments and feedback we receive from that. Along that lines, Commissioners Conkling, Mosher, and Spencer have been working with some of the city staff on special events recommendations, on a special events committee. We have been working throughout the summer. I think we have some good recommendations to bring forward to you, so Todd Larson and Luke Yeoman's are working on a memo to bring forward to you to consider at a future meeting, so appreciate their work there. We're going to stop meeting personally, we'll do the rest of the work via drafting the memo together, that's going to go to all of you, and then it'll be up for consideration and public feedback. We did receive our sales tax, and as you've heard probably and seen, did not end up having a very strong return. Just want to stress the importance to everybody in the public about buying locally, if you can, and you might not know, so sometimes we don't explore what's right here in our community, so try that first, definitely, and, you know, there's a cost to pay when you don't invest in Yankton, and it won't be the firemen from Sioux City or Sioux Falls that show up when your house is on fire, it's these folks here. And the way we purchase equipment and make sure that they're equipped with the things that they need is through that sales tax dollar, so that's an important reason why we should all shop as locally as we can, as often as we can. I'm doing my part. Wanted to let folks know that Douglas Avenue Construction, 19th to 21st Street, has started. You'll notice that as you drive down 21st Street. We have encouraged the residents there, if they want to park in Memorial Park parking lots, they can do so. They'll need to be cautious of the construction. We're going to leave the intersection of 19th Street open as much as we can. Police are informed, so you may see cars there for a longer period of time than typically you would see cars. Hopefully, once the water walking is complete, there'll be plenty of room. Also, our crew started to pave Bradley today, but we had an issue with the paver, so hopefully that will be repaired, and they'll get back on their way shortly, and that project can get wrapped up. Happy, Mayor, to stand for questions, if there are any, otherwise I'll let you continue with your business.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Yes, Steph?
Yeah, just curious, I know you all had a meeting, I think it was, excuse me, last week, with Class A mayors, just curious what the topic of discussion came up, if there's anything we should all be aware of as a group that might be coming in front of us, or kind of something they want us all to keep an eye on.
City Manager Leon, if you'd like to tackle that.
Sure. So, as you know, Commissioner Mosher, twice a year, the first-class cities get together with mayors and managers or administrators, whatever form of government that community has, and we talk about upcoming legislation and things that are concerns of all communities. The biggest point of topic, I think, was sales tax and property tax, and where we are all dependent in local governments, not just city, but also county governments on sales tax, or, excuse me, on property tax, and what this legislative session may bring. We also talked about some of the issues facing the larger cities, folks that are dealing with homelessness. Sioux Falls is especially concerned with that right now. And we also talked about legislation pertaining to publishing. There's some cities that recently lost their city newspaper, and then were able to get that back because somebody else transitioned, and they were purchased by another entity, but that was a concern about how legislatively is that handled, et cetera. Lots of good discussion, and I think going into the next legislative session, there was thought about how do we get together more with like-minded agencies, so the County Association, the School Board, or School District, School Administrators Association, and work together on bills that are important to communities overall, as opposed to all trying singular lobbying efforts. So, also, the league reminded us that we have committee meetings now to participate in, and so hopefully, as fall and winter continue, we'll be starting to draft legislation as well, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing no mics coming on. The next item on the agenda is going to be public appearances. This is for any time for anyone in the audience to address the Commission for an item not listed on the agenda. So if anybody has anything they would like to come up and speak about, please come up, state your name, you have three minutes. The floor is yours, anyone. Okay, I'm seeing no movement.
Mike, or, excuse me, Mayor, can I make two acknowledgements? Is this a fine, a fair time to do that?
Sure, go ahead.
First one, I want to shout out and thank, congratulate Matt Evans, and thank him for what he's done with the mall. If you were on Facebook at all, you know Hobby Lobby opened this week, or last week, because it was the talk all over, and people were excited, and I don't remember the last time people were really excited about a new business coming in like that. I went by before we came here on a Monday evening in the parking lot, it's pretty well full. So thank you and congratulations on your success. The other one is, I noticed on the paper this morning, I didn't expect all these folks to be here, but there's a picture of the firemen working on an accident scene, and I got thinking about it, and I read the underneath and the all-call, you know, I started thinking, well, so those people, they hear a call, they got to drop whatever they're doing, their life stops, and they go to work, and I just, I think they need to have some more recognition for what they do for our community. The other thing was, I think that's Brad Mosher's picture, and last week, my picture was in the paper, and my boss said I had to bring donuts, so you guys make sure you get donuts from Brad.
Ice cream tonight after.
Okay.
We got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Conkling, and Mr. Mosher is so photogenic, I'm not surprised that it's his picture in the paper. Also, shame on me, thank you for bringing that up. I also want to reiterate, I want to, I had to check it out, Hobby Lobby on Saturday, I have never, never seen that parking lot that full in my life. It was, it was pretty awesome. Walk through the store, full, full of people. I, of course, checked out the license plates, and there's a lot of out-of-town people as well, so thank you for bringing that up. Good catch. Okay, again, anybody else want to come up to the mic? Seeing no movement. We will go through to item three, we'll go under old business. Right now, we have, excuse me, item two, consent items. Right now, there are no consent items, so we will move on to item three, old business. There is no old business to discuss. Item four, new business that we do have, and so seeing a room full of firefighters, we might be talking about a fire truck, I'm assuming. So, number one, fire engine purchase. Consideration of memorandum number 25-154 recommending that the City Commission authorize the purchase of a custom E1 fire engine from North Central Emergency Vehicles for a total of $874,980 through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. And before I ask for a motion, I do want to say, because I want to be extremely transparent, anyone on YouTube, everybody in this room knows, I am on this Fire Department. That doesn't change anything, but I will not, because of an ethics I think would be wrong to vote on this, I will, I will be abstaining when that time comes, so I want to make that really clear. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion?
I just have one question. We talked about this earlier, because you can't pay for it upfront, you have to pay for it in stages, it's probably going to end up being over 874, whatever, so we just have to make an amendment and transfer a little extra funds in to pay for that, or how does that work?
Lisa, do you want to explain the Sourcewell contract?
I believe for the Sourcewell contract, our price is set, so unless there's any emergent change orders, we are locked in at that price, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Pardon me. I just did what you told.
We've got two mics on. City Manager Leon, go ahead.
I just did what you told.
It's okay.
I believe, Finance Officer Yardley, that payments not due until arrival, is that accurate?
I believe that's correct, according to the contract.
Sorry.
That's okay. Attorney Denherter?
Yeah, originally, our staff was told that it had to be purchased upfront, and Sourcewell came back and said, it looks like that's not the case after all, so this is a spot of good news.
That is good news.
Good deal. Okay, what else do we have for Commission discussion?
As I look at, okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
As I look at this, I understand the importance of new fire engine, and everybody's interest in it, and I appreciate all the work the Fire Department does, and utmost respect, so don't take this question any other way, but I'm just curious as to what has changed in 2022 and 2023, where responded to 14 calls a year, to where now it's up to, lost my place, but 30, nearly 30 calls this year. Just was curious what's going on.
Okay, Chief Linky's moving to the microphone.
Light, can you hear me?
The floor is yours, you got it.
So, past practice was for apparatus to either not respond, or for volunteers to go to the station and ask what apparatus should be taken, and the culture that we are developing is one of decisiveness, where you don't have to ask about what apparatus to take, like if it has a hose and pump and water, you should go. Also, we did change a couple of response profiles, so gas leaks and vehicular accidents and those types of, those types of incidents also receive a full response. So, in 2022 and 2023, yeah, there were 14 apparatus responses, but yeah, we bumped it up to about 45, because the volunteers are actually going to the station, getting on the apparatus and going, as opposed to asking whether or not they can go. So, that was the change in the operational process that we used. I'll wait.
Anybody else? Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Spencer?
Yeah, Chief, I just, looking forward for years of seven, nine, and 10 out there, you've got quite a request that'll be coming, and I know that's how many of us will even be here worrying about that, but it's just something that, and it looks like you also put maybe, put some protocol in there to try to extend life of units, maybe you can just comment on that, and just, because those budget items will be really big in seven, nine, and 10 years from now.
You're referring to Engine 2 and Engine 3?
Yeah, they're. And a ladder truck, I think.
Yeah, and a ladder truck. I, I'm guessing I probably won't even be here for the ladder truck, but I guess we'll have to, we'll have to wait and see, we'll see how, how much the boss likes me, but yeah, seven years from now, like, we're going up 14% every year with apparatus costs, and that's not a Yankton problem, that is a nationwide problem or issue. The, the engine that is being replaced, I think I had here at, we purchased it, Engine 1 was purchased in 2005 at $149,126, so it's, it's crazy. And I, you know, when I got in the business in, you know, in the early 90s, like comparing a little bit of apples to oranges or whatever, but like, an ambulance was $80,000, and now they're running $450,000. The Rural Fire District is, is just purchasing two grass rigs, which were, are pretty simple apparatus, and those used to be $70,000, $80,000, and now they're going to be $250,000 apiece. So, it's not something that I'm happy about either, it's just something that we have to live, live with and live through, and of course, you know, having a volunteer department, we're already pretty lean and pretty fiscally responsible, and it's just going to be something that we, that we keep an eye on. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I know a couple of comments you had in there was tried to extend the life as long as they can, or some other things to look at, protocol and other things, I just encourage you to keep, keep that in mind, so.
Yeah, and, and you know, when you go from 14 calls per year to 45, that's still not a big, a big jump anyway, and they're actually, and they actually do worse when they sit idle, so.
Tell me in your past from Lincoln, Nebraska, how, how often would you replace rigs down there, if you can recall, or if you know?
Yeah, so, early, early in my career down there, that would have been, I started there in 1998, and we went through a period of time, the, the first, we would do one apparatus per year, so, and we, at the time, we had 14 stations, so the idea was about every 14, 15 years. Funding was lost in the early 2000s, picked back up again in 2006, and then those apparatus, those apparatus went, going on 15 or 20 years, and those are 15 to 20 hard years of urban firefighting use. And now, I, I, don't quote me now, but I think they're on about a 15-year replacement, and then they go with the NFPA 15-year replacement, and they're reserved for five years after that.
Yeah, being in my hometown and still go there a lot, there's a lot of fire trucks running around town, I mean, their number of calls per year have got to be.
Yeah, when I, when I left in 2022, there were about 80 calls citywide per day, and now they're over 100 calls per day. So, units that I was, that I was on that were already really busy back then are now unreal now, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brunick, I saw that you had your mic on.
Yeah, I've got, Chief Linky, I said Commissioner Linky, I'm sorry, Chief Linky. I've got a question regarding the color. In this, we're talking about changing the color to red. Is that a shift that we're looking to do for all engines moving forward? What's the, what's the, the idea behind that?
So, earlier this year, when we were, were talking about getting this apparatus or specifying the apparatus, I, I was over in the museum, and we have a 1927 American La France, which is red, and so I thought, hey, you know, if we are able to purchase this apparatus by the time we get it, it'll be 100 years later. So, brought it up to the volunteers to vote on whether or not they'd like to stay with the current yellow, or current lime yellow, or if they wanted to go to red, and I think we had 36 votes, and it was 24 for red and 11 for, for the lime yellow. So, gave the volunteers an opportunity to be part of a tradition that they know that they actually changed or started, so that was the idea behind that.
Do you know how long we've been going with the lime yellow?
The pictures on the wall look like the late 70s or early 80s, there was a big movement in, during that period of time, where I think there was a big paint lobby, as, you know, is what I actually think, but there were some studies that were done that said that, or that reported that the lime yellow was more visible. It's actually not true, it's red lights and things like that, like, in a whiteout, the lime yellow is actually harder to see. So, anyway, that, that was all refuted back in the late, late 80s, early 90s, and now departments, I mean, I've, I've been places where they have black fire trucks, so it just kind of depends on what the community wants.
Sure, I, I understand that. My concern with it is, is just, if there's an additional expense along with, with red, I know that there, there won't be on, on the new vehicle, right, or the new engine. My concern is, is us going into the future, we've, we have a history of taking very good care of our, of our equipment. I want to make sure that we're keeping equipment for as long as, as long as we can, and, and taking advantage of how well, you know, the Community Fire Department takes care of, takes care of the equipment. What I don't want to have happen is I don't want us to be cutting vehicles loose just because of a color, is, is my, is my concern, and also, just looking forward, right now, our budget is, is, is really tight. We've got a lot of, there's a lot of nonprofit organizations inside this community right now that are really feeling a squeeze, so any place that I feel like we can try to save some funds, I, I think we, we need to be, I just want to be cognitive of it, and I'm asking the questions, I don't know the answers to them, that's why, that's why I'm asking them, but I do want to, I do want to raise the question of that, because I think that it's valuable. What I don't want to do is, I don't want us to be spending money switching the color unnecessarily, is, is my concern.
So your question is, is the apparatus more expensive because it's red?
No, my question is, is going into the future, is it going to be more expensive for us to change the color? And I know it'll be on a, on a, on a as, on a per-vehicle purchase, and there won't be a difference in that cost. I just want to make sure that we're not going to be cutting anything loose early because it's the wrong color.
No, no.
Okay. All right, just as long as that's stated, because for me, if my house is on fire, and a fire truck, all I want is a fire truck to pull up, I don't care what color it is, I want it to be safe, I want it to be, you know, I want it to be safe and effective. I want it to be safe for, for the, for the firefighters, I want it to be safe for the community, that's my, that's my biggest concern.
And that's what you'll get.
Okay, any more questions? Discussion? Chief Linky, I do have one thing, would you please walk us through the Sourcewell bid process and how that works? Because I know that, just to make sure, because I don't know, Ross, if there's technically, like, we're supposed to get three bids for things, I just want to know what that process is and how that works.
Do you want me to answer, or you've got the mic, so?
I'm here to help you guys. How about I just talk a little bit about how this works as a purchasing mechanism for a second? Would that be helpful? Okay, so, the city is a member of the Sourcewell Co-op, and I believe there, it's one of a few that the city is a party to, and it's a common source to acquire equipment for not just fire departments, but other, other equipment that the city, thank you, yep, that the city utilizes to acquire stuff. And essentially, the way it works is this organization goes around the country and does RFPs for all kinds of different types of equipment that municipalities might need to, to purchase, and they will do RFP contracts then with those companies that are willing to source certain spec items, and it is an efficient way to acquire things on, on a more timely calendar, to return those items once they're, they're purchased. So for instance, if we're buying an SUV and we want it in black, it might come in silver. You know, you, you kind of, you've got some amount of customization, but by, by picking from the available options that have been part of that RFP, you can usually have a faster turnaround and reduced costs. And that's the, what's been done here with this RFP contract, there's a specific Sourcewell contract that, that the city is latching on to, and it takes advantage of a, of a specific acquisition provision that stands in place of the RFP multiple bidding acquisition process, specifically SDCL 5-18A-22. And, and it essentially allows the city to purchase off of any competitively sealed bids or contracts awarded in a previous 12-month process from essentially anywhere in the country that utilizes this procedure. So, very useful tool, and should hopefully result in a faster turnaround. RFP stands for Request for Proposals, by the way. It's another word for competitive bidding, basically.
Now, my question would be, so are we, are we getting exactly what we want? Can we change things on the, on the fire engine to be able to make it, you know, specific to Yankton, or do you have to get exactly what was specced?
Yeah, this, this 874, 980 is based upon the specifications that I worked out with North Central Fire Apparatus. So it's what we have specified.
Okay, perfect.
Per that Sourcewell contract, that's listed on the quote, that is the preferred vendor that's most local in our area. So that is pretty standard procedures on our end, where they kind of work with the preferred vendor on specifications like that. But as City Attorney Denherter said, they are a little limited on what options they do have.
Okay. Commissioner?
Chief, the, the engine being replaced, whenever the new engine comes, what would be the, the resale value of that approximately?
About once a week, I get on the internet and I look at the Used Fire Truck Mall to see what the, where the prices are fluctuating back and forth, and it's hard to say what it's going to be like three years from now. About, about a month ago, it was looking like 30 to 50,000, and then just today, I looked it up again because I anticipated this question, and it's anywhere between 65 to 80,000. So who knows what 36 months from now is going to look like.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public want to come up and speak? Please state your name. I think it's on, it's on, yeah.
Brian Frick, Yankton Volunteer Fire Department. I think most of you know who I am. Chief said he, maybe they'd want to talk to somebody else other than just him, so I thought I'd give up and give it a shot. But I've been a volunteer firefighter for 42, just shy of 42 years. And in my time, I've seen a lot of trucks purchased in my years, starting way back, I remember when my grandpa was chief, up until 1972, buying trucks, Pat Smith, you know, I always remember Pat talking about the city budget, putting so much money away every year, so, and I'm not sure it was 20 years back then, it might only have been 15, I can't remember what the approximate time was, but, so I've seen a lot of trucks purchased, and, and you've asked a lot of great questions, you know, and I, like, like Bennett said, the trucks look really nice, and yeah, they look brand new, and, and we keep them that way. But there is a lot of internal things that happen with fire trucks, it's just not all on the outside. Water plays nasty things, the pumps, seals, and so over time, even though they look as nice as they do, that's another reason why you have to start looking at replacing fire trucks, apparatus. And that's, in my time, the city of Yankton's always been really, really good about, I mean, they give us the best vehicle that we could use to do our best job that we do, and, and I appreciate that as a person that lives in the city, and not only being a firefighter, and I know everybody else does also. I like what you said earlier, Mike, when you, when you talked about teamwork, I mean, that's what our department is. You talk about who we, not only is Chief Linky my boss, Amy my boss, but also the public is my boss. And I want to give them, you know, we do our best that we can, and I also want to have that equipment that, that we have to be the best that we can. And, you know, you look at apparatus, not only when, when we purchased, when we bid to this truck, looked up buying this truck, so there's things different on trucks, it's like new vehicles nowadays, it's, it's no longer, you know, they're, they're so much more sophisticated. And so when we buy, when we bid this truck, we looked at better hose placement, better ladder placement, all the things that help us, when we get to a fire scene, get the job done the best way we can and as quick as we can, because seconds matter for every call that we have. So, you know, the, the truck that we're going to trade off, you know, eventually, you know, yeah, that's been a great truck, and I've seen a lot of great trucks go out the door. I mean, Valen's got one that I must have put out, I don't know how many fires I've put out with that truck, but, you know, that's a great truck that, that we'll get rid of. But the one we get, you know, we specifically looked at just different little things, you know, where we can put tools at that are better, better place that we can get to quicker, and, and so there's a lot of reasons why, you know, when it, I mean, just because they look as good as they do, I mean, it is, there is a time when they, we need to start replacing apparatus, and that's why, you know, 20 years, we start looking at replacement of the trucks. So I just wanted you to know that side of it, and know as a fire department, we appreciate, I mean, I mean, I love getting new fire trucks, it's, it's not just the color, it's, it's just, I just love fire trucks, so we appreciate it when we get it, and, and I thank everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, so one last thing, like I said before, before, I am very proud to be on this department, I'm very proud of, to be a firefighter for 24 years. I started my career in Omaha, I've done, I could go back and look, but I bet it's probably thousands of calls, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head, but a lot, almost nine years worth. My busiest day at station, at Central Station, was 21 runs in one day. Point being is that when I ran for this commission, I, one of the things I put paramount was public safety. And so I want to make sure that we get the tools to our first responders and our public servants that they need to keep our public safe. And so again, I can't vote on this, but I, I do feel that I have a responsibility to at least add that to the discussion. Okay, with that, anyone else? Okay, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Like Mike, I, I do have a husband on the fire department, I did check with City Attorney Denherter to see if I can vote, the answer was yes, absolutely vote, but just in full transparency, it doesn't appear my vote will be needed, so I will abstain.
Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Abstaining. Okay, the ayes have it, motion passes. Okay, next, on the new business agenda, number two, would be the introduction, the first reading, and establish public hearing date for proposed ordinance number 1100, amending the city ordinances, chapter two and chapter 17. Consideration of memorandum number 25-155, recommending the city commission review and if necessary revise the proposed ordinance number 1100, and set September 8th, 2025 as a date for a second reading and public hearing. Do I have an introduction?
Introduced.
Introduced. Okay, number three, introduction, first reading and establish a date for a public hearing for the ordinance number 1099-2026 budget ordinance. Consideration of memorandum number 25-156, recommending the city commission introduce ordinance number 1099, and set the second reading and public hearing as September 8th, 2025. Do I have an introduction?
Introduced.
Introduced. Thank you. Number four, the Lynx development, development acceptance. Consideration of memorandum number 25-157, recommending the city commission accept the water, sewer, storm, and street improvements for the Lynx Development located at 30th Street and Atkins Drive. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Commissioners, any discussion?
Is there a TIF on this?
City Manager Leon?
I believe there is, yes.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing no mics, anyone from the public want to comment on this? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Birch?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Nay.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, the last item under new business, number five, this is again a discussion only regarding the intersection safety near schools, as consideration of memorandum number 25-158, recommending the city commission discuss and provide staff direction regarding the intersection safety near schools. Commission, you have the floor.
Since this was what I asked to be put on All Star, and I did mention that I would like to make, take action tonight, but is that, Dwayne, is that picture available? I think one of the things as city commissioners we need to do is be proactive, and I drive by three intersections that are close to the middle school and Stewart School, and notice things that I think could make things safer. I know there are other intersections near other schools, I just don't travel those. The first one is 19th and Douglas, and just having tried to cross that numerous times, I think a four-way stop is justified at that corner. The traffic going north and south picks up quite a bit of speed from 15th to 21st or vice versa. And if you're trying to cross that at, just two times during the day, you're looking to shoot a gap, basically, and you can't focus on kids at the intersection if you're trying to shoot a gap across the street. So at that intersection, that, that's my recommendation or my suggestion is we, and I think the fact that we're doing the road construction right now, if we could do it in conjunction with that, so when the street opens, it's there, I think that would be a good solution. If anybody has any comments on that one, I'd like to hear them.
I would just say, I talked to one of the landowners or property owners along that two-block stretch, and he liked that idea, he thought it would be a good way to slow down the traffic between 19th and 21st.
Okay, second intersection is 19th and Mulberry, and this is a little more complicated. I, I took this picture, and I had an idea, and then one of the, one of the neighbors, he lives about three houses east of there, contacted me, and he said, if you look, there's no yellow paint along the curb by the stop sign. So cars will park, and they can park right up to the stop sign, then you've got people driving, and he said it, it's very difficult to see children at the intersection. So I think it would be wise to paint that curb a half a car length, a car length, and the other two also, just so people can't park up to the stop sign. So it's, it's clear, it's easier to see children at the crosswalk. The other thing I thought about was, it would be nice to have red lights on top of the stop signs. In the morning, it can be, especially as we get closer to winter, it's dark there, there's a lot of canopy, and from what I've researched, flashing lights make people pay attention more. And so they don't have to run 24 hours, just those couple hours in the morning, couple hours in the afternoon, evening, you know, like, we drove by 21st and Mulberry, and the, the traffic was nuts at 5:30. So anyway, that's my recommendation or suggestion for that intersection. The other one was 21st and Mulberry, and so I think something needs to be done, but I don't know what to suggest. I mean, if you go in the morning or at, at 5:30, the north and south, or excuse me, east and west traffic is just crazy. But I don't know, I mean, I don't think a four-way stop is justified there. If there was a way we could stop traffic for those two hours again in the morning and the evening, that would be ideal, but I don't know, Adam and the street department would have a better, a better recommendation for that than I would. But I, I do think those other two should be addressed, because I think it will make it safer, especially if we have the sidewalk on the west side of Doug, of Douglas, there could be more pedestrian traffic there, I just think it's a good idea. If, if you have any suggestions or any other intersections you want to talk about, great.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Conkling. City Manager Leon, I know in our packet, there's some funding and some grant stuff I'd like you to go over if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, thank you. So we are aware, commissioners, that there is a possibility of some funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program State of South Dakota. They have a grant that may be useful, we don't know yet, but maybe this project might be useful to do some investigation of some sidewalks, what, for implementation of a Safe Routes to School program, all these intersections, you mentioned Commissioner Conkling involved schools. So that's an option, if you're interested in having some research done, perhaps that's a program we could apply for. There are certainly times of congestion at these intersections, and that program would look sort of broadly, and probably look at all of the intersections near all of the school zones and areas if it applies, we have not been able to connect with them. The other thing that just everyone should know is, you as a commission have the authority to make a motion and to pass a resolution to put in a stop sign or a crosswalk or a speed zone. Typically, how we've handled those things is we've made recommendations through data that we gather through traffic studies. So my recommendation would be that we study this by doing some, if you want to just focus solely on these intersections, that we have our engineering department focus on these intersections, and then use the Unified Traffic Manual to determine what the best traffic devices would be, if the painting would be the best, best route, or perhaps some, something in street design would be a better route to think about while we're in construction, that might be difficult to determine, because we want to make sure that we're managing the complete street, of course, but, so that's how we've typically made those decisions based on data, and what is warranted, what we call warranted by that traffic code. However, it's, it is your purview, certainly, there are times when those intersections do create some congestion. So just with that information, we can do our own studies on specific intersections, or we can look into that grant and see if there's something that we can tap into that would cover more of a universal consideration of school zones.
Okay, thanks for that explanation. Commissioner Mosher?
Amy, I don't know if this is you or if it's Adam, I know we've had people come before the city commission before requesting stop signs, four-way stops at various intersections in the community, and I think you referenced a code or a rule that goes with that, and I'm wondering if you could, Adam, Amy, if you could kind of share what that is, because I know, like I said, I know these requests have been made of the city before, but I know there's also kind of some rules and regulations that are in place that dictate some of that as well.
That is correct, the, the manual that Amy's referring to does have criteria that should be met in order to, to justify stop sign placement or yield sign placement, any, any traffic signing situation. Stop sign, a lot of, one of the big things is accident history at locations, so that's one we'd have to work with the police department on to get those. There's also criteria, traffic counts each direction, pedestrian counts go into that. What else, Brad, is there? There is a number of criteria, and we can sure send that section out to the commission if you'd like to see it. I will say one thing to, to be cautious on is that the manual specifically says stop signs should not be placed as a speed control tool, just so that everybody's aware. That's, it's, I think that's even in bold when it states that, so.
And if we did, if we were able, lucky enough to get that traffic study grant, then how, how long are we talking, would that process be, Adam?
So the, the Transportation Alternatives Program, that grant takes a while, just so to be aware, so that is a, that would be a lengthier- So, that is a, that would be a lengthier process. These other, we can study these intersections preferably after the construction's done, just to give, get better accurate counts on specifically pedestrian and traffic. But we can sure start researching that and pulling accident history and whatever else we need to gather for those intersections.
Okay, that makes sense. Commissioner Spencer?
Just a comment, maybe a question, we could follow up, you know, Twenty-first Street's busy, Stewart School's got crossing guards personnel out there. As far as I know, middle school at Twenty-first and Twenty-first and Mulberry does not. A question for the school district, or I just, that's kind of an obvious thing, I wonder, maybe someone can shed light on that.
I believe that was a cooperation between the police department and the school, and I'm not sure how that works today.
Jason, can you speak, or Chief Foot, can you speak to that?
So that was started probably, I would say, late nineties, early two thousand with the school district and Chief Heaney at the time. Since then, it has changed a little bit. They don't see the need for it at, I think it's in the morning, so it's just an afternoon crossing guard. The school provides the guard, and then we pay the half hour that they're out there.
It just seems like something maybe should be researched a little, I mean, easy, it's not all day, it's an hour, one in the morning, hour and a half, I don't know, but it is, we took a lot of kids to middle school up Twenty-first and Mulberry over the years. I know how busy that is, and it's just as busy as ever, but it seemed like there might be a solution there or an option.
Okay, city manager Leon?
I can certainly visit with the school about any, any of these options. That would be another piece of this puzzle is, you know, discussing with them about circulation and bus times and all those types of things. I don't know if the school would want to continue with that program or expand on that program, but certainly we have a good relationship with YSD, and we can talk to them about that, if that's important to the commission as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Going to the Twenty-first and Mulberry discussion, I've had some residents comment that they would like a four-way stop there, especially to allow left-hand turns, because if you try to go up, you know, when, in mornings with just the two-way stop sign, trying to turn left backs everything up and make causes of situation to be worse. So, something to consider and look at.
Thank you, Commissioner. And having middle schoolers, I've tried to pick kids up there too, and it is, you are in line for a while, and not only that, but you have to be extremely mindful of kiddos running out between cars too. Commissioner?
Yes.
Amy? City manager Leon, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, and would like to just reiterate, that's why we have these intersections studied. That's true during those high-traffic times, and the days, you know, eight, eight AM to eight-thirty AM or whatever the times is busy there, that is the case. We have to think about, too, that's actually a route that I take at that time of day, and you can have too many stop signs along the way and block traffic. That's why we prefer to have some, you know, data to help you all make those decisions and have the Unified Traffic Code sort of validate those decisions, so we're not trying to solve a problem and create, making the problem worse or creating a new problem when we're trying to solve one that exists. So, I'm not a traffic engineer, and certainly none of you are wrong, there's lots of frustrating things about that area on school days, during the school year, on those times of days. I just don't want to make things more difficult for the traveling public, because we've done something that we were trying to actually help them with.
And that's fair. Commissioner Conkling, if I could comment before I call on you?
Yeah.
One of the things I want to say too is that that's very fair. I mean, we want to make sound decisions with, with data, data-driven decisions, so we're not just hoping things work and making the problem worse. However, though, I would like to make sure that we are making that a priority and potentially even coming up with a goal of when we think we might be able to come up with either a solution or, or work around or something to fix that.
Yes, and if we're clear on what we're doing, which intersections, or if we're looking at more of a community-based, then we can give you a better timeline.
Okay. Commissioner Conkling, you brought this up, so what, what are you looking at or looking for?
Well, I understand the reason behind having traffic counts. My concern is that people are more and more distracted every year. I mean, you drive down the street, you always see people on their phones. I think we've been fairly lucky at some of these intersections. We had one tragedy at this one, but I think it's only a matter of time if we don't do something with the traffic to slow it down, you know, during those timeframes, something bad's going to happen. I'd like to see things move forward as soon as possible. I understand Twenty-first and Mulberry's going to be a little more complicated. I'd like to look at the four-way stop at Nineteenth and Douglas as soon as we could, get that moving, and then these, this intersection also, because there's, there's just so many kids that cross that in the same amount of time that I think it needs to be addressed. So, the sooner, the soonest we could do it would be my goal, and I don't know what that is.
Good question.
It'll take a little time, but we can certainly start pulling information.
Okay.
I would like to add that, yes, distracted driving is an issue. There's, I've observed many intersections in overtime, and a lot of times when traffic is held up, it's because somebody was sitting looking at their phone, and they, they missed the opportunity to pull ahead or make it through the traffic signal, or they just held up traffic in general, so.
Okay. Commissioner Mosher?
Unrelated, but related. Since both of you are at the mic, I'll ask, how is traffic flow hap, going on at the new school? Any updates there? I see Chief laughing, but I'm just curious, obviously it's a brand-new route and all of that, just curious how the first week or so went.
It is a new facility, and there's going to be some traffic patterns that'll need to be learned, I believe.
I would echo his comment that it's a, it's a learning curve for everybody, not only the people dropping off, but the school, learning how it's going to work best for traffic flow, and officers out there trying to enforce things.
Yeah, change is never easy, we just have to be mindful of that, right, and just patient with each other, so, good question. Uh, city manager Leon?
I just want to be clear that we're going to look at the intersections of Nineteenth and Douglas, Twenty-first and Mulberry, priority, prioritizing those two, and then also Twenty-first and Mulberry, and also make some inquiries with the school associated with crossing guards and their flow of traffic.
So commission is that direction we're giving? Do we feel good about that direction?
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, okay, that is the direction. Thank you. Okay, right now, we're in, on number five, future business. This is where, if there is anything that any commissioner would like to address to put, that is not on this agenda, we will not deliberate on this, but we can add this on the next agenda if you would like. Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like, in advance of our, our vote before the, at the next meeting, as far as the second reading and public hearing on the budget, I'd like to publicly reiterate our request I've made a couple of times this year privately. I'd like to ask the Thrive Board for the minutes from their past ten, fifteen years, that would include YAPG minutes then too, to gain a greater understanding of how the organization works and how it spends our money. And I understand that there's issues of confidentiality that, you know, concerns have been expressed about, and as far as that goes, you know, they can certainly redact any economic development prospects that they think they need to keep confidential, but I just want to repeat my request for those minutes prior to the budget vote.
Okay, so you're asking, do you have the minutes given to us by Thrive and with reductions? Is that what you're asking, Commissioner Hanoff?
Yeah, if other commissioners want to see them, I'm sure they could be sent to them too, but I'm specifically requesting them from my own review.
Okay. So again, you'd have to have a second then to add this onto, onto the future agenda.
Second.
Can you repeat what we just added?
Go ahead.
This would be an agenda item?
No, I was looking for information, and you know, we have three Thrive Board members here at the table, they could be the conduit for this request. I want to see that information prior to the next meeting.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Well, I think you'd have to have that conversation with Nancy from Thrive, the CEO of Thrive, to facilitate that, because it's my understanding, and I don't want to speak for Thrive, but I know they said that that was, at this time, they weren't able to do that. So I, I guess where do we, where do we go from here? Ross, I'm going to let you chime in on this one. Sorry.
We don't have direct control over that, though a conversation may be had with the CEO, and we could make that request. I just, I don't have any way to compel it.
We do have a Thrive Board meeting this week, so we'll reach out to make sure they know that's a request, and get your feedback.
Okay, is that amended?
Yeah, that's all I'm asking for, is that the request be forwarded to Thrive. We have three board members here that could be the conduit for that. Thank you.
Okay, yep. Commissioner Conkling?
We've talked about looking at the recycling system. Is there a way we can get that started? I know, I don't want to pile on the, but I think there are possibly some ways to save money through that, making some modifications, so I would like to see that discussion start sometime soon. I don't know if it fits in with all the other things we've got going, but...
I'd say let's get through budget first, if that's okay.
Then we're done, we're going for it then.
Yep. Fair enough. Okay. Anybody else? City manager Leon?
I'll get it on the list to start. It's on the list, and I knew it was coming, so I'll start talking, and I think probably one of the first things that would be helpful is to put together a little bit of history and maybe a white paper, I don't like that term, but some, some history on where we're at, how we got where we were, how single stream happens, what, what we pay for, our relationship with Vermilion, all that good stuff, and then we can, I feel a task force coming on, or a committee. Thank you.
Well, I expect that it's going to take a little time and a little digging, a little research, so I, that's why I'm not pushing it for next meeting, but I think it'd be a good time to do that after budget, to dig into that and see if we can save some money and make some changes.
So just putting it on the radar, is that what you're saying? Fair enough. Okay. Uh, one thing I want to say too before we end, just again, commissioners, if you do have questions, please, again, communication, collaboration, cooperation, please, if you have questions you want answered, please just reach out to individuals as well. I'm sure people will be happy to have a conversation with you, and I can say that pretty confidently, but, so with that being said, any other future business? Seeing no mics, could you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, everybody.